Today in the Lawrence Beat Weekly Update, we are joined by Earl F. Glenn, a mostly retired data scientist, scientific programmer, software engineer, and physical scientist living in the Kansas City metro area. He is also the publisher of the Substack Watchdog Lab.
We believe that asking good questions, solid questions, will lead us to the truth. Welcome to the Lawrence Beat Podcast. We believe that asking good
Earl, welcome to the Lawrence Beat. Thanks so much for coming on today and joining us. And you know, we're, the topic is dark money. And we kind of just, you know, I don't know, even how we got to thinking about this, or things were sent to us, and
Yeah, a couple of articles, Earl's Substack, a article from the Wichita Eagle, because they're having the same flyers go out in Wichita.
As they are in
As they are in Douglas County.
Yes. And so we reached out to Earl, and he's gracious enough to come. And just as Dusty introduced him, he's has some expertise in this area. And so, Earl, thanks. Tell us a little bit about, you know, what was your journey into what you're doing today? You were semi-retired, and but here you are, you find yourself looking into these things.
About 20 years ago, I was involved in some Johnson County politics, and I noticed that what was reported on the press wasn't always what happened. And I started digging into some campaign finance reports, looking for answers. And that led to like studying nonprofits from the IRS. And so there's just a tangled web of where data comes from on these things. And so I kind of kept a low profile to keep my job the last seven or eight years. But now that I'm retired, I can kind of follow the data wherever it takes me. So someone sent me a flyer saying, where did this group come from? And I looked into it. So that's kind of our connection today.
Well, the it's, so we were sent your Substack, that's the tutorial, and we found that very informative. And so we thought we would just walk you through this tutorial, because I think in many ways, it just helps easily unpack what we're talking about here. And we had covered the, one of the flyers earlier. When was that, Dusty? Was that like in September?
I believe early September. It was this one, the Shannon Reed, Lisa Larson.
So this is technically not a political ad. This is an issue advocacy ad. So even though there's candidates on it, this doesn't go through the normal campaign finance reporting of the ones that you're showing on the screen now.
Okay, okay. All right. So let's, let's just begin with that tutorial. Who sent me this political flyer? And so you began to look into this? And what, what, what kind of began to stick out to you?
Well, the first thing you do is just, what are they? And so you start with a Google search. And if you do a Google search on Kansans for an Affordable Future, it takes you to some records here in the Kansas City area, but all goes to attorney's offices. And those attorneys are never going to tell you anything. And so then you start, the next thing I usually do is look for, is it a Kansas corporation? And so if you go on down just a little bit, is this thing a registered Kansas corporation? So there's a little bit of information about that. Just a little bit more. So there's a business entity search from the, from this Secretary of State's office. You can always start there. If you have a name, go there and look, look for it. If you do, you can find some information about who put that together. But they're really, again, there is all the, all the information on that site was just attorneys in Kansas City. So it really didn't tell me very much. And then I said earlier, this was issue advocacy where you're not really, you have express advocacy when an ad comes out and says, vote for or vote against a candidate. So when that's on an ad, that's going to be governed by campaign finance. And it's either going to be a state issue through the Kansas Governmental Ethics Commission, or a federal issue through the Federal Election Commission. But this isn't, this isn't express advocacy. And so those are typically nonprofits. And there's different kinds of nonprofits. And so I really, this is going to be the first in a series. I just haven't found the other article to write in the series. But this one turns out to be what's called a 501(c)(4), which is more an advocacy nonprofit. And so if you go on down, I guess, I can't remember where we are here. So now, so you go to the IRS, yeah, here's where I'm looking for. There's an IRS search engine that you can put the name in. And so I got to hit there. So this has a legal existence as a 501(c)(4) through the, through the federal, through the IRS, I guess. And so if you go down one more, the next part of the screen, it actually gave you an address. So this is, when you apply to be a 501(c)(4), you get what's called a determination letter from the IRS saying that yes, we agree with your application. And this one said that, okay, Kansas for an Affordable Future, you're a 501(c)(4) as of a particular date. And so you can start using that name. If you start looking for that, so yes, the thing is registering Kansas and has this address, but who are they? What are they doing? So the only thing I was able to do is that Sweet 906C at 800 Southwest Jackson Street matched up with another organization, which if you go on down to a separate IRS filing, is to the Blue Stem Foundation for Economic Freedom. And so we know that they share the same address. We don't really know anything more that about them, or much more about them. Both of these organizations will file what's called this IRS 990 that we just saw. But they will do that typically the year after they spend the money. So if they, if for this calendar year, they probably won't file that report until next November. That's the way a lot of them, a lot of them work. So we won't find out much about either of these nonprofits and how they're, they could have the same boards, they could have different boards. We really don't know that until then. But this one that they matched the address on, this, this, this is a list of some notable Democrats here in the state of Kansas that, that work on politics. And so at that point, you kind of say, well, they're kind of the same organization, but we, there's details to be determined later.
And what distinguishes them from having to report their donors and not report their donors?
So on both 501(c)(3)'s and 501(c)(4)'s, those are two different kinds of IRS nonprofits, they absolutely do not report their donors. It's just part of the way the system's set up. It's like freedom of speech, that they do not have to report their donors. The way I find them is if another group gives them money, that group giving them money has to report it in some way. And we may see here in a minute that a local Kansas PAC gave them some money. Often when a nonprofit gives money to another nonprofit, you find the sender, but you never find it on the recipient's report. And so you have to do some sleuthing to do that. And so I just downloaded a bunch of IRS records, and I do brute force searches, and I connect some dots whenever I can.
Okay. So the Blue Stem Foundation for Economic Freedom and the Blue Stem Fund PAC, they're two separate entities?
And they share, yeah, they share the same website and everything. And then the Blue Stem Fund PAC, that is something that Kathleen Sebelius established when she was governor, probably, I don't remember the year, 15, 20 years ago.
Okay.
So you know that Kathleen Sebelius is probably involved, and other Democrats are probably involved at that point.
So does, so then Kansans for Affordable Future, which is the, the organization that's listed on the, the, these flyers that, you know, have appeared in Douglas County, and as we may see, were reported in the Wichita Eagle that they had, they had some issues with.
And their Facebook page talks about Wyandotte.
Yes, yes, that's true. They do have a Wyandotte, the, I don't, the, I can't remember which board is in Wyandotte County, but yeah, they're involved in that, too.
So they don't have, they, they haven't had the opportunity to have to, okay, because of their 501(c)(4), they, the donors is
So you're never going to find the donors from them. You're going to find people giving money to them.
Okay. And is that where the term dark money comes in? Like, you, where does that term dark money?
Dark money is basically when you can't trace the money back to the ultimate source. So it can be 501(c)(3)'s and (c)(4)'s. It can be, there's just a lot of, that's the typical way that the dark money is used. You just can't trace it to the original source.
So one of the things that kind of was interesting, you know, didn't think anything about it, you know, we did see the flyer, we reported on it, that was Shannon Reed, Shannon Reed sent it out right before the primary with that, we saw that. And then there was some questions that came up about that, about the, the, what would you, the accuracy of the footnotes on this flyer, that kind of became a discussion, which
Not so much the footnote, just the accuracy of what they're claiming.
Yeah, yeah. Right. That's not uncommon. There's another group called Voter Participation Center and Center for Voter Information that sent like one and a half million things, very similar to this in Kansas in 2022. And so it's just amazing what's going on.
So we were, we had looked at that, and you know, that was a done deal. And then we, we got another flyer recently sent to us. Actually, I had got one of these sent to my home. And it had that same organization on the bottom, which I was a little surprised initially, because I felt that it was pretty clear that that organization that had sent the flyer during the primary, Democrat primary and the county commission race here, was pretty well proven that that was, you know, not particularly upright, you know, nothing illegal, but that, it wasn't accurate documentation of what one of the candidates' positions were. And so when this came, and then I didn't really pay much attention to it. But then I saw someone told me, hey, that's, that who sent this flyer out is the same people that sent the other flyer out. And this is for another county commissioner in a, in a race here. So
And then what, a couple of days later, we see the Wichita Eagle article?
The Wichita Eagle article. And then a couple more days later, you know, we see your Substack. So it's kind of like, we're not really putting the, we're not connecting the dots, but people are connecting the dots for us, it seems like, don't you think, Dusty? And so having you on and just looking at this, and just, I know this is, this seems like this is kind of bigger news than outside of Douglas County. And so what, how, how is this impacting this particular Kansans for Affordable Future, an Affordable Future? How is this operating outside of the, the two counties and then possibly Wyandotte? But is there other dark money that's kind of appearing within some of the state races?
Oh, there's huge dark money that's been going on for years. I have a whole hour talk about dark money in Kansas, going back eight to 10 years. So there's Kansas Values Institute, for example, they spent $23 million in 2022 alone. And I don't remember the exact number of 40 some million dollars since like 2011 or 2012. We don't know any of their, we know some of their donors. I can find the people, the nonprofits that give them money. But I've only found like a fourth of their donors. So three fourths of their, their donors are unknown. And they're, they're a huge spender of dark money in Kansas.
Earl, have you seen this kind of dark money in county commission races in your research?
No, usually, usually not local elections. No, it's usually get out to vote efforts, voter registration efforts. It's a little unusual. This, this is like a surrogate for direct advocacy, where, you know, you get a flyer that says, vote for or vote against. This is kind of trying to hide it even better than normal. So you can have normal ads that you can't find the, who's sending them out. But these nonprofits will find out more information in a year, and nobody's going to care about it at that point.
Right. So what you're saying is because this says, thank Commissioner Karen Willie.
Yeah, yeah, that's a different, yeah.
That's not saying vote for her, it's just saying, thank her.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's one of these, there's two different schemes, kind of thank them, call them. And then this comparison where it's an issue that there's, they had, they showed three issues. And so it's an issue advocacy at that point.
Right. Lowered county mill levy to reduce property tax burdens, which we've beat to death here. It's not true. Initiated a pilot program of tax relief for senior living on fixed income, which we've also discussed here on this show. And Johnson County is doing it. And there's what? 40 people total signed up?
It's, it's not what it tells.
Right. And then the last one, advanced renewable energy projects increase the Douglas County tax base.
Which someone told me it's a little misleading, because the, there's, there's a period of tax abatement. Is it tax abatement that?
The first 10 years, they're not paying any taxes on it. What was that thing called? The payment in lieu of pilot program?
Yeah. So
These kinds of ads are appearing locally in your county commission races. They appeared in the statewide here in Kansas. I got an email from a guy in Iowa. They're appearing in congressional races in Iowa right now. They're, they're at all levels of government right now.
Yeah. It's, how, what, so it's, it's legal, and you know, it's, it's what it is. But is, is there anyone that you've seen that has maybe tried to say, hey, this, this might be need to have some kind of limits to it, or, you know, some reformation to it, reform?
The National, the Voter Participation Center and the Center for Voter Information, they're very active in Kansas. They're very active nationally. There are people that are saying that nonprofits should not be involved in the election process. They're, they're discussing at the national level whether Congress will do anything, we'll have to wait. So people have identified it as a problem. And they're, they're at least promoting discussion.
Right. Very good. Well, Dusty, do you have any more thoughts or question for Earl? Earl's kind of a busy man. We appreciate his time.
You're crunching those numbers, no?
Well, Earl, thank you so much. We've been promoting your Substack, and some people are very interested in, in maybe dialoguing with you that, you know, have similar concerns that you do, and want to kind of have government transparent and accountable. And so, you know, I appreciate you as a retired individual, you know, you're, this is volunteer work for, you know, making, you know, Kansas in our, you know, region better. So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. And everybody go subscribe to, to Watchdog Lab Substack here.
Yes.
I'll throw it up again.
Watchdog Lab on Substack.
And it's totally free. You know, there's no payment required.
That's always good, right? Well, good for those who reading it, maybe not so much for you. But thanks again.
Hobby.
Yeah. Yeah. I joke with people that are like you, that, you know, instead of doing, you know, crossword puzzles in Sudoku, they're actually doing real stuff. So thanks a lot.
Hold on, Earl. If you don't mind, another Earl just commented here. He had a question for you. Could the sources of dark money be from the parties who are seeking approval of the industrial solar and wind farms? Evergy and others?
That's possible, but I don't have any information that's definite on that.
Right.
Something else for research.
Well, and like you said, if they were, Evergy would probably have to have record of them giving to it, right? So
Right.
That would, that would be ultimately
And it comes out after the fact, and
If they give directly to the nonprofit, you know, you probably aren't going to find it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Good question. Well, thanks again for coming on, and we appreciate it. And we'll, we'll probably seeing you down the road. Thanks, Earl.
Thank you.
All right. That was interesting. And Earl's in the middle of something else right now. So we didn't want to take too much of his time. But his Substack is, is, is pretty prolific, prolific. What is it? He's got a lot of articles on here. Oh, but let's look at this real quick, that Wichita Eagle article that, you know, you, you talked to Chance Swain, the author, the journalist behind this. And
There it is. Too many windows open. All right. So Chance was trying to get time to come on today. Also, he did not get that.
I imagine he's busy, too.
He's a little busy, he said.
Yeah, I imagine lots of cover.
Something's going on next Tuesday.
The Chiefs?
I don't know.
Wichita State basketball?
Maybe. Go Shockers.
So here's, here's, it's a dark money group sending out false and misleading ads attacking Jeff Blubow, a Republican candidate for Cedric County Commission, has ties to a Topeka lobbying, lobbying firm, run by several Democrat operatives who held state positions under former Democrat Kansas Governor Kathleen Sebelius, who served as the Secretary of Health and Human Services in the Obama Administration, the Eagle has learned. Blubow is challenging Democrat incumbent Sarah Lopez for Cedric County's second district. Lopez, the lone Democrat on the commission, has condemned the ads online, and in an interview with the Eagle, saying that she had no role in creating the ads or approving them. So this is interesting. She condemned the ads that came out.
Right.
So she saw what had happened and condemned it. I don't remember seeing any kind of Shannon Reed even addressing this.
No.
Maybe, maybe she did, and we didn't, we didn't see it.
Right. And we touched on the show a couple, maybe last week, two weeks ago, but she did not come out. I don't, not that we can find, come out and say, hey, this, I condemn this. So
So the, the, there's a point in here that he, I think Earl covered this with us. But then, again, same, similar kind of thing that Earl, but if you keep going down, I've, okay, so here it goes. Because the ads don't directly tell voters to vote for or against a candidate, Kansans for Affordable Future, it's not subject to Kansas Campaign Finance, Finance Law, that requires, whoa, disclosure of who donated to the organization and how much they paid. Then it talks a little bit about Summit. I don't, but if you keep going down a little bit, Dusty. Okay. The first ad launched online falsely claimed Blubow slashed funding for police and firefighters and cut public safety jobs. In his 11 years on the Wichita City Council, the city consistently increased funding for public safety. The annual police department's budget grew by 41 million during his tenure, and the annual fire department budget grew by more than 20 million. Neither department cut jobs. And then if you go on up, because it's, a second ad showed up in Cedric County voters' mailboxes this week. It features a cutout of Blubow's head arranged inside a peapod. Okay. Three public, so this goes into how they try to tie him with these other people that are under, what would you say, investigation by the Ethics Committee?
Right.
But then, if you go, keep going down in this article. Yeah. Yeah, keep going down. Okay. This is it. On Thursday, a third ad from the Kansas for Affordable Future showed up in Cedric County mailboxes. It encouraged voters to thank Commissioner Sarah Lopez for fighting to make Cedric County a safe and affordable place to live and work. So this, and again, this isn't to, just because it's
I'm guessing it looks something like this.
Yeah. So again, it's, it's not illegal, but you just think about like, wow, what, who wants to influence the Douglas County Commission race to such a degree that they're, that they're wanting to
Earl here, Earl Colley has another comment I found interesting. The local Sierra Club was for the industrial solar farm. Perhaps they are funding the, a funding channel for energy.
Yeah, those are all the same things, you know, that there's a possibility, but we don't have any idea who's
Was Karen's husband part of the Sierra Club?
You know, I'm not sure. Yeah. Just, it's enough just to think about what is in front of us that, you know, because that's just speculation. So
He was some in that, a couple of weeks ago, when we went through the lawsuit.
Conservatory.
Oh, is that one? Okay, that's right. That's right.
It's not the Sierra Club.
That's right.
And I might not have gotten that correct, but it's, it wasn't the Sierra Club that
Yeah, I remember what you're talking about. Yeah.
So, you know, here we come down, you know, to the
I think this paragraph here is telling.
Okay.
"I'm very disappointed in these dirty campaign tactics," Blubow said. "When a candidate or a campaign is afraid or unable to run on their own record, they stoop to these negative political games. We need to stick with the issues, the county, and work for real solutions to move Cedric County forward." When a candidate or campaign is afraid or unable to run on their own record, they stoop to these negative political games.
Which, which, you know, not making any direct application, because I think that's
Right.
You know, that's the people that, that, who it hurts is the citizens.
Exactly.
And
Exactly.
You know, it's one of the things I've enjoyed is getting to know a lot more people in different avenues and areas of Douglas County. And I mean, I know, I know a lot of people. I actually like people, you know? And getting to know them has been just kind of amazing. But the stories that they tell are moving. And it gives you a real heart that Douglas County has some great people. And
Oh, absolutely.
That's, that's the thing. And to put, to put, to, to put in front of people anything that would mislead them is, is kind of I take offense for the people, you know, because
Right.
You know, I can, I can kind of think and have people to talk to about. But when you go meet, you know, people, and, you know, it's, it's all, you know, cliches and lines and word salads. It's, it doesn't create an informed populace.
No.
And so you, I think that's part of what, you know, I'm sensing is, if we could, if we had leaders that were more transparent, they would, they would feel like their job would be to educate.
Right.
And that would be in educating through, hey, this is what, here's what's going on, here's what we're, and relying on those. And we've, we've been talking about that for, you know, since, you know, we started this Lawrence Beat and ask questions. And if you, it's always the questions that they don't want you to ask. That's the questions that you need to ask. And the questions that they won't ask, answer, those are the questions you just got to keep asking. And you got to keep telling people to keep asking those questions. So
Right, right.
So
I'm trying to see here. Just a reminder, if you haven't voted already, go vote. If you're voting at the voting office here in town, just be careful. The
Be careful.
Yes, the, the Whataburger opened Monday, and traffic in that area, you got voters coming in.
On a scale of 1 to 10, how would you rank Whataburger?
I haven't eaten there, this one.
Austin, how do you rank it? Scale of 1 to 10? Seven and a half.
Give me Five Guys Burgers over, I think Five Guys is up there. Burger rating show here.
Have you guys ever had In-N-Out?
I haven't, no. Austin says slightly overrated.
Fries are good.
Culvers has a good burger.
Oh, Culvers is, my mom loved, I would pick my mom up and take her to Culvers and get a one of their kids' meals, because you get, this is not advertisement for Culvers, but burger, which is pretty, kid's burger was, I think, like a single
Right.
fries, drink, and a scoop of custard. All right. This is a busy time for everybody. And, you know, just want to just send out, you know, everyone the best here. This is our, this is going to be our last
It's the last one before the election.
For the election. But we're going to be coming to everybody live on election night.
We are. We'll be live.
We'll be live.
Tuesday night, starting at 7 o'clock.
Polls close at 7.
So And shortly after. And shortly after that, we should start getting some results in. So spend your election night with us and we'll try to keep you entertained.
Yeah, I, I just.
We'll focus mainly on local elections here.
There's a lot of nerves. Uh, people are nervous about it. You know, mostly it's, they're nervous about the national election and, you know, but, um, if you stay connected to other people and get outside your bubble, you'll, you'll be amazed that, you know, we have a lot more in common than we do. Uh.
Oh, absolutely.
And, you know, just, just be at peace and, uh, you know, eat right.
Skip the fries at Culvers.
Yes. All right.
All right. Thank you, buddy.
Bless you all.